Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our work session. It is five thirty-three. We're going to go ahead and get started. So if you will join me in the flex room, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Hi, Ms. Tammy. Please note that we have all five board members with us tonight. And at this time, we're going to go to two point O, the board work session, two point one insurance liability and coverage. So I will turn that over to Mr. Pitts.
Great. Do I need to be somewhere to be on video or just right at that seat there?
Or you got things looking into it.
It's gonna capture you.
It'll get me.
Do you prefer to stand your?
I might. I might get animated. I don't know. It's insurance. It gets really exciting. So yeah, I think I'll pace around a little bit here. So thanks for taking time to learn a little bit about your insurance policy and how it affects the board. That's our topic today. My name is Marcus Pitts. I'm with Brown and Brown Insurance. We're your insurance broker. And we work with your insurance carriers in order to help provide you coverage as a board and as a district for the city. So it's been a real eventful year, this past couple of years in the insurance world. Lots of different claims are popping up for lots of different subjects and new coverages have come on. We are responsible for kind of gathering all of that and making sure that you have the proper coverage in place and also working with you guys to train a little bit too. So. So you'll see up here you have the PACE logo. PACE is your actual insurance carrier. We also work with your workers comp carrier that's safe. But today we're talking about the PACE coverage. And PACE provides coverage for liability for the school district, which includes board members when they are in the course and scope of their duties. So you want to be under the umbrella of insurance as much as possible as a board member. And we'll talk a little bit about how to make sure that the coverage is applicable to you and what you're doing. And then some of the potential pitfalls of maybe stepping outside of your duties or inadvertently, you know, acting outside of the courses and scope of what you're asked to do as a board and the potential liability that results from that. PACE is an insurance pool. It services the entire state of Oregon, if you're not familiar. And it's specific to Oregon school entities and it provides a very robust amount of coverage, twenty million dollars worth of coverage, which is something that you don't see out in the market often unless you're a really large entity to have that amount of coverage. So it's really nice to be in the pool. It's broader than your typical insurance market. They're a little bit more forgiving as well in their coverages. It doesn't have the adversarial relationship. And then they also provide a lot of services as far as training goes. So it's a good place to be. And they've been going through some, you know, double-digit increases in the insurance world over the last few years. And they've really stepped up the emphasis on training and just trying to tamp down the liability because the claims have driven some of those claim costs up. So we're out here to help them out as your broker too and answer any questions as you go along. So we'll talk a little bit about the insurance pool, who's covered, how you're covered, and how the insurance applies specifically to you as a board member. I put this slide up. It's kind of a one-on-one type of slide, but you know, what is a tort, right? The insurance coverage is intended to cover you for torts, wrongful acts against another entity or individual. And as a, as an insurance policy, it's, the coverage is based on the language of Oregon revised statutes and torts that are identified by the Oregon revised statute. So the coverage specifically says it's going to cover anything that is Oregon tort law identified. So anything that you do as a public entity or as a public individual is going to be identified in Oregon state statutes as course and scope, right? Are you working within the course and scope and have you violated anything within that? Part of the reason that's written that way is because there were tort cap limits and you'll see on the second, second portion of that page, Oregon limits the amount of damages that can be sought by individuals or groups of individuals against public entities, which is a nice protection to have. And that's why the policy is written that way. These are actually updated as of this year, not twenty-three, twenty-four. The numbers are correct. The date is wrong. But right now, any individual claim can be up to eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. And then any group claim, you know, liability to multiple individuals can be up to about one twenty million dollars. That climbs every year and they, and they reset the rate. So it'll go up a little bit as, as we go. With that in context, that twenty million dollars is actually more than enough coverage. However, the tort claims act is not undefeated. It can be defeated. So it is good to have that twenty million dollars in place in case you need it. So talking a little bit more about towards, right? This is.
Shutting that door so.
Sure.
This, thank you. You'll see all yours.
In order to commit a wrongful act, there's a mechanism that has to be in place. You as a board member, as an individual, or as a district have to owe a duty to another. That duty must be breached somehow. It must be the cause of damages to another individual. And then they have to prove what those damages are. So there's common duties owed. If you were to look at the claims that come through the PACE insurance carrier, lawyers, individuals are going to allege that certain duties are breached. And these are the most common ones for board members that you see. Duty of care or diligence, loyalty, good faith, not profiting unfairly, avoiding conflicts of interest. That's a big one. A duty of obedience to the district itself, compliance with provisions and staying within your charter articles and bylaws. You're going to get into the nuts and bolts of what all of that is, I think, in the second half of your night tonight. We'll talk about how this affects your insurance coverage. These are the common sources of the claims that we see roll through. You'll see right in the middle of their conflicts of interest underlined. It's, it's one of the main ones that we see coming through. And that involves often the ethics board as well. So Oregon Ethics will investigate these conflicts of interests. And we'll talk a little bit about your defense, how you might be defended under your policy if that occurs. I won't go through every one of these, but there are a good number of them that pop up. And we try and train people not to libel or slander others. That's another big one that we see going on as well. As much as we can, just so that you know as a board, you know, first of all, that you aren't doing it individually outside of the board's quorum or outside of the district's business. And then also as well that the district is, 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 is at least within the course and scope of what it should be doing so that the policy will kick in and provide the coverage necessary.
Marcus, would you give, just as those are the two main ones, conflicts of interest and libel, or do you have like common examples of what that would look like in your life?
Yeah, a conflict of interest would be if you're rezoning, you know, if you're voting on something that could affect a business or an individual household owner, you're changing, you know, you're changing the zoning rules. And you don't disclose that you know the, or that that lives there or the business, or you have an interest in the business that's there. That would be a conflict of interest if you aren't accusing yourself from those votes and just separating yourself entirely from that. Libel or slander, that, there's so many examples of this. If you, it could be, you know, you're on Facebook and you're commenting on district business in a way that affects a business owner and they believe that you've damaged their business, you know, something happened over here or we have feelings about this particular business or, you know, just even incidentally mentioning them. And the owner says, well, you've, you've actually caused me to lose business. That would be, that could be a libel or slander claim back towards you. And, and the policy would have to respond to that. And we'll talk a little bit about whether or not you're doing that as an individual or as a group, because that's a big distinction within the policy language. Blackmail. You know what that is, right? None of that. So what is a participant? So this is who is an insured in the overall insurance world. What is a participant? It's an insured. So participant means the individual or the district entity in each of the following acting within the course and scope of their duties. Any board, any commission, governmental agency, subdivision department, municipal body is all encompassing while you are in the course and scope of what you're supposed to be doing. And as long as you are a participant, you have the full force of the twenty million dollar policy behind you. Now, if you are acting outside of the course and scope, they're going to look at this particular definition and say, you don't meet the definition. You are not a participant. Therefore, we are not going to cover you. And that's the danger we want you to be aware of. And, and the training that's going to follow this up, that should help you stay within the boundaries or under the umbrella is what we call it, under the insurance umbrella. So how do you stay within your coverage? Board members are empowered only during sanction board meetings where a forum is present. That's important. If you want to have a quorum and you want to be acting as a board, if you aren't inside of a meeting and you're acting as though you are a representative of the board on your own accord, outside of a quorum, the policy can look at that participant language and say, no, you were acting on your own. We are not going to cover you for your potentially slanderous or libel or whatever it might be, your conflict of interest. So all members must be acting within the course and scope of their employment or duties, whether arising out of a governmental or priority function. Otherwise, they can be excluded as participants as defined within the PACE policy. So, so yeah.
Go backwards just a second and ask if a board member is saying speaking to the media outside of a board meeting, has an opinion on board business.
Yeah.
Is that course and scope or not?
Can be. So, so if a board member is empowered by the board to speak to the media outside.
All board members speak to you.
Right. And so it's what we try to do is we try and encourage that, say you have a particular topic that you're working on. The cleanest and easiest way is to embrace it entirely and say, okay, this is our topic. We have a, an individual that's going to be our spokesperson to the media. And questions are going to be funneled through that. That's a best practice. That's going to be clear cut. You are responsible for talking to the media and then anything that you say to the media that is within the board, you know, decision-making is going to be just fine. You're not going to have an issue.
It's so nice when it works that way.
Yeah.
So often doesn't.
Exactly. And then we start getting into the murky side of things where maybe you are fielding a question that's just been directed at you. And, you know, simple enough question, you want to type a response back or take a phone call and you just answer it. Then it starts getting into, okay, were you within what the board had decided to communicate on this subject? Right? The adjuster, the claims adjuster is going to be looking at the specifics of the claim when it comes through and whether or not this individual intended and acted in a way that the board agrees with. If they went outside of that and just started speaking off the cuff and said something that was, you know, detrimental, then, and that the board doesn't back them up on. Then we start getting into the coverage question. Is PACE going to look at that and say, no, I'm sorry, that was you individually just sort of spouting off or saying something that you shouldn't have that the board doesn't agree with. So cleanest way is you're the spokesperson. You're going to talk about it. We've had our forum. We know our position. And then you are communicating that position. If you make a mistake, mistakes are made. You're covered.
Well, if we write policy language into our board job description that says communication with media and constituents is the course and scope of a board member's duty.
As a blanket.
Come that way?
As a blanket statement. It doesn't absolve you from every statement ever made, right? So if you were to say something that the board does not agree with, then we're going to have a little bit of infighting. And it's going to be, it could become a coverage question as well.
So typically how this plays out is a media person will reach out to the entirety of the board and say, we want to, give us a comment on this.
Yep.
Some board members feel more comfortable than others and some direct them to the superintendent's office. So would you, I think this one might be one we want to explore in policy and take to the policy committee. So this, like Scott said, it rarely plays out in this ideal way that we hope it would.
Or we're leaving a meeting and somebody comes up and is like, what do you think about this?
And you've already, gavel's already down.
Yeah. And, you know, talking to the car.
Yeah. So we'll take that to the policy committee in December and explore this and come back. In the meantime, you're always welcome to direct or get to the superintendent's office. There's something you love to do.
And if you have a stated position as a board, like that you've come up with in quorum and you were beating that out to, to others for maiden, there's, there's really not going to be an issue there, right? It's, it's a state of, it's when you start deviating from that.
Right. So here's my question then to what, what about the libel, like flip side of it, like when we declined to comment or whatnot? And then there's, there's comments made about us in a very public forum.
Like being transparent.
Or yeah, like there's possible, you know, if we're all operating within this community and.
That's sort of the political reality of it all, not necessarily the legal reality of it all. It's difficult. I can't give you a perfect answer for that.
Yeah.
You know, you could approach that in a few different ways. As long as you can respond, maybe you could get ahead of it and you have, you know, a prepared response or something. Or you guys have just spoken about it. Or if you can respond and just say, hey, listen, we're going to put this on the agenda for next, you know, next session and we'll go, go get back to you as soon as we can. Again, I'm going to tell you my perfect world, understanding that your world is not perfect. But coverage will look ultimately to whether or not you were acting as an individual or were you acting as a board, as a representative of a board? And then how clean can it be from that point on? Are you within what the board had decided on? Or did you deviate from that? Was that deviation intentional? Was it malicious? You know, it gets into a lot of the weeds. Generally speaking, if you're acting in good faith, you should be in pretty good standing. We just want you to be as in the best standing that you possibly can be. So some examples, I think we almost covered one of them. But if you're on the board member likes a response to an unfair criticism on Facebook. So you got Facebook criticisms coming in off of what's something that's going on. A board member decides to respond to that and say, hey, that's not true. We're doing this instead. What do you think? Covered? Not covered? Or is there going to be an issue?
Yeah, a pulse. Board issues on social media, period, isn't it?
There is some language.
Yeah.
The answer is always going to be, it depends.
Yeah, of course.
But, but my question stands. So like, I get it depends, but I mean, apart from what you're saying, you know, we have policy that's pretty strict around it, from my understanding.
On how to respond?
Or yet or not to, not to comment on social media about board.
Yeah. And maybe how to route it, right?
Yeah, just there's a running. But, but from my understanding, if they're the policy saying that we can't, then we would automatically be out of scope, even if we're doing that, like, right? Like, because of policy, because of policy would make us automatically out of scope.
Now, your policies are going to be your policies. Are the insurance carriers' coverage is going to depend on whether or not you have stepped outside of your board's.
But, but right. I, I know an argument, but I'm saying, don't, aren't we automatically stepping outside or our board participant definition if we're stepping outside our policy?
You could be. Yeah. If you're, if you're acting against your own policy intentionally, well, you're going to, you're going to have a tough time. Now, if you negligently, accidentally, that's where it depends, right? And it starts depending on the content and what's going on. Pace leans towards leniency and training. However, intentional acts, they, they brown upon quite slightly.
I don't, I don't think anybody is.
But if you have, say, for example, you have a, you know, you have a topic that you have appointed a spokesperson in our best practices scenario to, to answer these questions. You guys have all talked about it. It's been on the agenda multiple times. And your positions are pretty clear. And somebody get, the board member gets a criticism on Facebook. They are not the spokesperson and they respond in a way that is actually not in line with what the board has stated as their position on it. Then you are very likely outside of the definition of participant. So it's, the training is really, I, the idea behind it is we do see a number, you know, every year of rogue board members, it happens. People, things get contentious every once in a while. The vast majority are fine. People are doing all right. But you do need to be aware of the dangers of going rogue, right? Doing something that, that is against the board.
But, but to your point, Kelsey, I'm not aware of any policy. It says you can't post on social media about, about school board business. It just says, if it's your personal opinion, you should clearly identify it as your personal opinion. That language is all over the policy.
And not stating this is.
Yeah, don't say I'm speaking on behalf of the board. Just be clear if it's your personal.
That's where we've seen the real practical examples go south. I think there was a board member years ago that whole ethics complaint just because of that thing of distinguishing, this is my personal opinion versus this is me representing the board. So that's, that's the.
But you can certainly jump out on social media and say, on such and such a day, the board took this action in this position, a factual statement. That's fine. But if you're going to come out and say, well, the board should have done that, personal opinion.
Yeah. And that's one other point that we make too, is we're not here to say you can't do something. You are able to do it. It's just a matter of whether or not you're doing it on a personal capacity or as a member of participant under the district's policy. So if you want to, you know, put out your personal opinions on something, we can't say no to that. You certainly can do that. Just be aware of the coverage potential. Press release, a board member called at home by the Oregonian and is asking for comments. This kind of speaks to the whole, who's the spokesperson? If in our perfect world, if you have a, if you have an issue or topic that you know is going to be contentious or the press is going to latch on to, it might be wise to identify the person that's going to speak to it rather than have the Oregonians start fishing for answers and calling around to everybody. You can just simply say, no, this individual has been identified as a spokesperson and they can respond to your questions.
Coincidentally, that policy is reviewed by the policy committee will be at the November board meeting. So it'll be a good refresher to see what, what our language is.
Little different topic, auto liability. Say you are as a board member attending a conference. You drove there and it's out of town and you're involved in an auto accident. Any idea that that's going to be covered or not?
Assume your personal policy is primary.
Your personal policy will come into effect. If you are a board member though, this is the distinction we want to make.
Are you interrupting a board activity or doing a board activity or are you doing a personal layer?
Yeah. So if you are, first of all, is the conference something that the board has decided that you should attend? Right? Are you attending it on your own and identifying yourself as a board member? Or did the board say, hey, look, check out this conference. Let's get some people to sign up and go out to this and identify you. If you are tied to that conference through the board, through a quorum, again, the perfect world is going to be the board said in a quorum, we want to go to this conference. We're going to send, you know, individuals to it, identify them and then they go and they have the full coverage behind them. The opposite of that is a board member saw something and decided they were going to go and attend. And, you know, they're wearing the, I'm, I'm a board member for County, but nobody here even knew about it. That's, that's the flip side of that. And then there's every grade in between that the adjuster is going to look at and say, all right, they knew about it. They've been going every year for many years. We'll, we'll lean on the side of, of coverage versus not. And you're right about the personal life, personal auto policy. That's usually the first layer. Your HR policy might identify that as board members and employees. Personal cars, insurance is primary. We hope that it says it that way. If that's what your intent is. And then the PACE policy acts as an excess policy above that.
So example, so two weeks ago I was in Portland.
Yeah.
Some homeless guy came running off the curb as I was driving out of Portland and smashed a rock at the back of my car and did twenty-five hundred dollars worth of damage. So fine, I turned into my personal insurance. There's a thousand dollar deductible. I turned that into PACE.
This is an educator's liability policy, but not an auto comp and collision kind of policy. Yeah. So you, you would not have.
So my smash is a homeless person. I would want to turn it. If this person clashes into me, then it's on my knee.
A judge might ask if this was an intentional act, but but yeah, in theory, that's fair. So yeah, it's, it's good to know. And, and if you identify conferences that you're going to and you want to make sure that you're within the policy and acting within the policy. It goes for all forms of liability too. If you're a board member that's at a conference and you're saying something and you're interacting with folks, it's better to have that identified that, you know, this is a conference that the board has adopted or encouraged people to go to. And, and the coverage should apply for you. Ethics violation. So let's say a board member is accused of creating public policy for their own benefit or enrichment. I can think of a city right now that's going through this. So, and I'm sorry, that's where the zoning example came from, but that's more city than it is school district. But if you're creating a policy and it's going to, going to benefit you, you should refuse yourself, right? If you're in that situation, but what if you don't think it is or there's really no connection there? And somebody files an ethics violation as more of a weaponization of that process, which we've seen happen. Covered or not covered? It depends, of course. But there's, there's a sublimity. Let's see what's here. Yeah, I'll just go to this one. So there's a sub limit within your policy that I want you to be aware of. Ethics complaints typically are covered for you, the defense of those entities. Right? Because we typically would want to hire an attorney to defend you. Up to twenty-five thousand dollars per official. That's not a ton of money, just in the attorney's world. So you're aware, that's actually up from seventy-five hundred dollars per official. We lobbied hard for this and just got it. So that should be going into effect this year. Twenty-five thousand dollars per official and then twenty-five thousand dollars per coverage year for everybody. So if you all are involved in these, PACE only provides twenty-five thousand dollars with the coverage each policy year. There are some strings to that as well. You can't be guilty. So if you did it, or if the ethics, if, if the ethics word decides that you are somewhat responsible and they slap a fine on you, the defense costs are not covered at all. So they're pretty strict with this coverage. And so we want to make sure that you understand that going in. If you have something that occurs, if somebody does file something against you and you get an investigation implemented, we will reach out and we'll make sure that you understand that going into it. And, and there's attorneys that can, you know, we can recommend as well to help you out. But twenty-five thousand dollars is the limit. And it works on our reimbursement phases too. So you might have a pocket to begin with and then, and then you can get reimbursed if you prevail. So what we like to see is as a board, you are as deliberate as you can be in your decisions that you're making. So while you're in the quorum and while you're making decisions on any particular topic, explore it. Make sure things are on the record and that you are being deliberate about what you're going to say to the public, what your positions are, how the public's going to interact with you, what the context will be, how to deliver the message, who's going to deliver the message. The more that you can kind of embrace that process, the more protected you will be. And as a board member, just think twice about your actions as you're doing them. If you decide to make a response on your own, outside of the board, you can, again, you can do that as a citizen, as a board member. Just understand that you're taking it on to yourself to do that. And if somebody were to take offense to it and perhaps find a way that it had damaged them in some way, they could file against you and PACE would be looking closely at the circumstances in terms of are they going to cover it or are they not going to cover it? So don't assume you're covered outside of the scope of your duties. And if you have questions, there is a PACE legal team. We're a great broker to contact and call as well. And, and they're always willing to take a phone call. So happy to do it. I think that's, any other questions before I wrap it up? Thank you all.
Appreciate it.
And I do just want to comment to the rest of the board. This, this media versus insurance thing is a big deal that we really do need to figure it out. The last board was so scared after the presentation they got from PACE that nobody except me would speak to the board or speak to the public or the media, which was not good. The public, you were all elected. We all have different points of view and we all need to be able to speak to our public. And the way we do that is through the media. So trying to figure out that balance so that we don't have uniboid. And the way we do that is through the media. So trying to figure out that balance, so that we don't have unibles um, is really important. People need to see their views and their biases reflected at the table in order to have confidence in the elected board. So however we get there, it's, it's a critical issue to our success.
I have the spokesperson on the table, whatever.
It's pretty hard when you've got. Generally the chair, Jen.
Delegated to the vice chair, Mr. Cooper.
I mean, you could do it with certain matters, but a lot of times the lesson is it's stuff that's either pending or outside what we decided.
Right.
Well, it's also critical if you have a divided vote. I mean, you don't always have unanimous votes. Sometimes you have really strongly felt opinions of the media needs to be able to speak to both sides, to both sides. So. You don't usually designate a minority and majority spokesperson with that.
I've been.
And while the majority would love to run over the minority, that's generally not a very healthy.
Understood. So my understanding is that here pretty quick, we will go to two point two OSBA professional development. Yes, um, with Janet from OSBA.
Janice Mandrenche apologizes. She was planning to be there in person, but due to the inclement weather, she will be joining us virtually. So we're just gonna troubleshoot some technology, so it'd actually need to take a break at all.
I'll give the time to do that.
Janet, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me? Yeah? Okay.
We're just making sure you're up on screen.
Yeah. Sounds good. And let me know if you don't see the PowerPoint.
You have the PowerPoint up as well.
Great. Oh, yep, I can see the screen even. Yeah.
All right, Janet, I think we're ready for you whenever you are.
Sounds good. Thank you all. And thank you so much for the flexibility. I was getting ready to leave. I was in the office and got a call from a colleague who was passing the pass and was like, it is really bad, a semi even flipped. So I really appreciate the flexibility for for safety reasons. Um, I have done this training lots of times virtually and it goes well. Um, so hopefully that, that happens tonight as well. So thank you again. Um, for having me, uh, Janet Alveda Medina from OSBA. So. All right. So just very briefly, a little bit about me, um, the Board Development Specialist, which is a fancy name for trainer. I've been with OSBA for five years. Um, I am the facilitator for this training. I'm here to really guide you on your roles, your responsibilities, and then share best practices. But you all are the experts. You're in this board. I'm gonna be asking you questions. This is a very interactive presentation, so I'm gonna put you to work. Um, but really, I'm going to be sharing, of course, based on what I hear. I wanna make sure it's tailored to your needs, to your community, to your district, and then providing you with some evidence-based professional development around governance essentials, the do's and don'ts of of a board. And that's just a couple of things about me. I'm born and raised um, Oregonian from Hood River. Um, go Eagles. I am also a duck. Sorry if there are beavers in the room. Um, but I'm used to it because all of my family in that picture are beavers. And so although I've never served on a board, I come from a very large Latina family where um, sometimes we have disagreement and we have to come and and hear each other out and make decisions. So um, I definitely understand what it can be like to agree to disagree and to uh, make sure we hear everyone's voices. All right. So before I dive in, I do wanna give you just a little bit of information about some uh, about OSBA. So I'm not gonna go through every bullet. Here, and I will share these slides after um, after tonight as well, if it's helpful. So don't feel like you have to write everything down. Um, but we provide a lot of services um, to ensure that you're an effective functioning board. I'm on the board development side, so I help primarily providing evidence-based trainings. Um, but really just, I'll show you later tonight, um, some resources and where to find additional resources. But if you aren't sure, you know, you can always route things through through me and I can either answer the question you have, or if it doesn't pertain to, to my department, route you to a different department. Um, but if you're not sure, also you can contact info@OSBA. That's a really great kind of connection point um, to kind of guide you on where, um, you know, what, what department maybe can help you with the question you have. And that goes to any board member. You can reach out to OSBA. We are here to support you. We are not a regulatory agency. Um, so I just wanna kind of differentiate that. Um, sometimes we may seem like it. Um, but we're not. And also, um, I'm not an attorney, so I won't be interpreting the law today. We will cover a couple scenarios. Kinda, I loved hearing uh, Brown and Brown as he was speaking. I was like, oh, yeah, you can uh, connect it to the policy and we'll probably connect it to some of these scenarios that I'll share tonight, um, to just put things into practice. Um, I'm not gonna talk about pace, cuz you just heard from Brown and Brown and you probably know pace is the property and casualty coverage for education. Um, but you'll oftentimes hear, you know, contact pace legal, we'll say contact your district um, attorney. And if not, you can contact pace legal for those um, situations where it depends. I loved hearing that. Somebody said it depends. Yes, we hear that often. Um, but really, the situations kind of do depend. And so, um, but we do have those resources for you. Our core partners, so um, COSA is our sister agency. So we provide support for boards. COSA provides support for administrators. Oregon Department of Education, I'll walk through a couple of that. And then also the Oregon, um, O G E C, the Oregon Government and Ethics Commission, which is a regulatory agency, and I'll talk a little bit about that. So Coalition of Oregon, um, school administrators are COSA for shorthand, we're OSBA, OS for shorthand. Um, they serve at school administrators, so they provide professional development, kinda like I provide professional development for boards. They provide it for superintendents, for um, administrators. You'll often sometimes hear their superintendent academy. They also have conferences like we do. They offer licensure and degree programs, um, through the U of O. They've partnered with University of Oregon for, for some of those licensure and degree programs. O D E, um, there's a lot there. They oversee, of course, the education of five hundred sixty thousand students in Oregon Public K through twelve education system. The State Board of Education sets policies and standards. One of those compliance and division twenty-two standards, it's really important, especially as you boards are making decisions. Um, you know, it's important to understand some of those um, standards, um, what they set for curriculum. Um, the difference of grants. There's a lot of, they like to say the alphabet soup, right? Title programs. I D A, there's a lot of different state and federal grants, um, that they administer, as well as numerous state grants. Um, complaints sometimes can reach in in your policy for complaints, and I'll walk you through that um, and show you an example, which I also have provided um, packets of some commonly used policies. So feel free to look at those. Um, Tammy, thank you for printing those for me. Um, and so sometimes when it comes to a complaint, it could reach an appeal. Um, and so, but you know, follow the process when it comes to complaints and just a, just a heads up that sometimes there, it can be appealed. Um, and this, you know, is important for boards to know when it comes to all this information around the curriculum, around the standards and compliance. Um, you know, ultimately, your administrator, your superintendent is going to be making sure you're informed on this. They're attending meetings, they are attending, um, sometimes with other superintendents and getting that information. So that way, when you are making those decisions, so you are aware of some of those um, standards and what's happening at the state level. And then O G E C, how many of you have taken already the uh, public meetings law training? That's required now. I think I saw everybody raise their hand except maybe one. Um, so, uh, so that, again, there's a lot of uh, statutes. Um, there's a lot around government ethics and law. Um, they are regulatory agency. We also provide um, our attorneys have done the public meetings law. We have that as available um, as a webinar to um, meet that requirement, um, that needs to be done once per term. So just wanted to provide a little bit of um, an overview of all these different agencies. I think it's important, especially as a role as a board and for new board members to kind of understand um, some of those differences and, and how we kind of um, with those core partners um, can support you all in your role. All right. So just a raise of hand. How many new board members do I have in the room? One, two, three? Three board members. How many have served? Okay. How many have served um, more than two or three years? How about five years? Scott, uh, ten years. How long have you served? Remind me again?
Seventeen years.
Seventeen years. Yeah, cuz I was in Kirk County, uh, last year. And so I'm sorry, what is it? Yeah, I know. I wasn't able to make it this time in person. Um, but yes, okay, perfect. And how many have you attended the summer board conference? OSBA's annual, so, great. So there was a lot of core essential, especially for new board member trainings. Um, I am the program planner for annual conventions, so I noticed that a lot of you are coming to convention. Raise your hand if you're coming to annual convention. Yeah, I saw a few re-registered. Um, awesome. There'll be more opportunities there as well. Um, how many of you have attended Kirk County School District or the Oregon Education System?
Yeah, education stuff.
Yeah, what parts?
Kirk County?
Yeah, Kirk County.
Kirk County? All of you in the Kirk County? Okay, great. How many of you are parents? All of you. Awesome. Um, all right. Any teachers or staff? I know board members sometimes wear many hats. Okay, perfect. Well, thank you so much. I just wanted to get a little bit of a sense of who's in the room. Um, so again, for today, I'm gonna be covering board roles and responsibilities. Really talking about the difference between governance and management. Um, and applying best practices, giving you some tools and resources to take with you to put into practice um, throughout your journey as a board member. What I'm not gonna be covering, as I already mentioned, because I'm not an attorney, um, is public meetings law, but we do have that um, webinar and training that's now required. Okay, so again, you're the experts in the room. So I would love for you to let me know what's going well. What are maybe some challenges or getting caught? And I know some of you who are newer, um, you might sure yet, but just kind of um, popcorn style, what are your, the board's top strengths? What would you say are some strengths of your board?
Building relationships.
Relationship building? Okay.
Well, it's still from Joel's PowerPoint, it says goal alignment.
Yes, goal alignment, okay.
And it's color coded.
So like district goal alignment?
Yeah, Jen, I don't know if I'm supposed to weigh in, but I think the, the, I'm most impressed with this board is their heart and passion appear to be focused on students, which is so huge in every decision.
I love that. Anything else to add to this list?
It's an apolitical board.
An apolitical board. It's a good list. Anything else?
I could keep going. I think, uh.
That's good. Yes, please participate. And Tammy, feel free to participate as well.
We all, uh, one thing I've been really impressed with as well is each board member has a very unique perspective. So for example, Kelsey currently has three students in school. Mom, working mom, Kevin's got uh, three, or Kevin, Eric's got three students in school, Kevin has a granddaughter. Jen's actually a former employer, uh, employee. Scott, like we said, has just been around forever. But, but just the different perspective that they each build is, is really useful.
Absolutely. Yeah, and that's why you're individuals on a board, right? Cuz you all wanna bring in those different perspectives, lived experiences, so that you make an informed decision. All right. So what about, this is a good list, and we can add to it later on, it's a parking lot. What about some areas of growth? What would you say are maybe, or some areas that, you know, the board maybe could expand on? What are some areas of growth?
General knowledge.
Experience.
Experience?
Got three months left for my belt. So, yeah.
Any area specifically? I know you're doing this training on governance essentials. So kudos.
I think it's just like I was talking to my husband tonight, and you know, he was talking about a policy and you know, we just, I, I think we don't always, because of the experience, have clear, well, it's almost impossible to know this all the time, but like when we set forth a policy to really understand how that gets fed through kind of the front lines of um, you know, just how that it's executed, right? And so that, that always feels like a blind spot that haunts me of okay, this feels good in theory as a, as a business professional, but how does this actually, you know, when there's a student in a counseling office that actually needs this to get done, like, like, is this really relevant and kind and helpful, like?
Hmm, mhm. So how is the policy really creating an impact? You adopt it. It gets implemented. But like, how are you evaluating like the actual impact of the policy? Is that what you, is that what you meant?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, but.
Board hasn't been tested on conflict management yet. We haven't had conflict among ourselves, and we haven't had conflict with our public. So we'll see how that goes with it.
Good. That's good for me now. And we'll touch a little bit on that as well and what communication protocols. We always say, step your systems before you need them, right? And I always tell boards, conflict isn't bad. It's how to manage conflict. And so having those tools and resources ready to go if you ever encounter that is really important, so.
It depends on how many people in front of you when you're having this conflict.
It depends what?
On how many people are in front of you when you're having this conflict.
And that's hard, right? Cuz all of your conversations, you're in front of the, yeah, you're in front of the public and it's, it's not gonna be easy, but it is important to um, you know, also I think I tell boards, you know, it's important to have those tough conversations, and that's part of the job. It's a, you know, everything is open and public, but um, it is important to have those conversations, but to have those conversations with respect, right? And making sure, again, um, that you're upholding your standards of conduct. Yeah. Okay. This is a great list. I'm gonna keep us going cuz I only have you for two hours. Typically, I do this training in three. Um, so I'm gonna try to condense this as much as possible, but I also wanna make sure there's moments to ask clarifying questions. I don't like to rush through the through the process. You know, I wanna make sure that um, I am helping you um, address and making sure I meet the needs of your board. And we can always come back. All right, great. So I told you I'm putting you to work. I wasn't kidding. So the next, uh, let me go back to my current. the next, let me go back to my current slide. Alright. So just reflect on your own again. I'll give you maybe a minute or two before I ask you to share. Why does the board matter? Just in a few words, why does the board matter? Comes to mind.
I mean, I think in an ideal state, the board matters because if we're truly doing our job, we're basically like creating systems for people to thrive, right? Like it's all of the structure and the business operations so that these amazing teachers and staff can do what they need to do. It's it's kind of doing that heavy lifting in the background so that execution fills.
And support.
Yeah, supporter.
We've seen it in the past too, it reverberates in the community, whatever direction the board takes, whether it's supportive or not. People feel it not just directly in the schools, but
You set the tone, I like to call that. Yeah, we'll talk about that a little bit more. What else comes to mind?
Community voice and community lens.
Absolutely. Situants voted you. Yeah, voted you in. Anything else? Joel, do you have anything to add?
I was gonna say, I I love that the board is, I mean essentially, you think of the check and balance and you guys are the community's check on the on the school district.
Great, it's a good list. How about, let's go back to here. Why does board culture matter?
Uh, because when you participated in a not good culture, you understand how much it matters.
Tell me more.
Everybody in this room understands what I'm idea about.
There's an impact, right? When there's a, yep.
Well, I think like, the the perfect example in my mind is, you know, when we first came on and there was how many policy backlog of how many policies. So when you talk about board board culture and this ability to work through problems, it's like that that starts to have this real impact because everybody's like, well, I don't know how this policy is going to work. And it just created this huge like bottleneck of educators being able to focus on educating kids. So it's like, that's where board culture of being able to collaborate and be focused on what's truly important because so so important because it has this massive, I think you said ripple effect people who are trying to do their jobs.
And to the students.
Yeah.
You know, we have four hundred employees showing up every day to focus on students and when when the board might not be in a place that allows them to do that, it really does impact the day to day operations and daily experience that our students have.
Absolutely. And when there isn't that, when there isn't, like you were saying, when there isn't that positive culture, it can delay the work and you start losing focus, right, of like your students. Anything else? Lastly, why does your relationship with the superintendent matter? And I invite those who haven't spoken yet, if you're comfortable, but that's how you, you know, that's that's part of the learning. We're all here learning. To speak if you haven't spoken yet as well.
I think we've had recent experience with good board superintendent relationship and not so good board superintendent relationships. And so I think this kind of goes back to what Scott just said. You know, we all know what that's been like, or most of us know what that's been like or had a helping of it. So I think board superintendent relationship, it's imperative that it works in both directions, that everybody works together in the end for the students. I mean, that's the that's the goal. This should always be about students.
Absolutely.
I'd say it also impacts everything else. So like we were talking about before with the culture and the community ripple effect. Goals aren't aligned, then you're a superintendent basically executing the policy that you're setting. So if they don't agree with it and are doing something else, there's going to be frustration or friction there. And your goals aren't going to be met and their goals aren't going to be met because you're just going to be infighting.
Yep, you're delaying the work again, right?
And we talked about students, we haven't touched much on the impact that both the board and superintendent have on staff. And that's one thing we saw where if if at the top it's unstable, then your your high performers, you you know, your staff members that are valuable. One, they're not focused on students and two, they might start looking elsewhere. So so another big piece is making sure it's positive for staff.
It all just trickles down, I believe.
Yeah, that's right. Great. Awesome. And we can come back to this. Alright, so you already kind of mentioned this community engagement as I think you said it was an area of growth. Or no, why the board matters. So you are that connection point to the community, right? You're kind of, the board ensures the district is accountable to the community. You serve as that interface between the community and the district. So really, again, that connection point and why it's really important to that the board is on that same page of that unified voice. So again, you can agree, disagree, but what gets shared out? And I think I heard this a little bit in the Brown Brown presentation I was listening in. What gets shared is really important because you want to make sure you maintain that trust with the community. Because when trust starts getting broken, whether it's with the community or with the relationship of the superintendent, that has an impact. It has a direct impact into your students. So there's the key, that one of the key things I want to share there. Boards, your purpose, right? We kept, we kept mentioning students, students. Absolutely, that is your main focus. Your purpose is to improve student It's really important for boards to have this single belief that all of your students can and will learn. And really important to know who your students are as well. How many of you know who your students are? Or how do you know who the students are here at Kirk County School District? Just to raise a hands. So again, it's really important that you have that single belief and that you set really high expectations for your students. And these are just some reflection questions to think about to ensure that you have that belief. Can every student show growth? Can every student succeed? We know that, you know, we can predict student outcomes by social factors, but if that's so, is that what we want? You know, what percent of students not graduating is acceptable for your board? I once had a board say like, well, a hundred percent is like unrealistic. And I I push back and say, set the bar high, right? Be, you know, have those expectations and have those conversa- conversations, you know, of like, you know, that's not going to happen in a year. But like, if you're at eighty percent graduation rate, you know, set that bar that is part of your role and that is what we mean in terms of having that belief that every student can and will learn.
Yeah, just to pause you. Do you know what the Kirk County School District graduation rate is?
It's pretty high. I don't know it off the top of my head.
That's our, so we were at ninety seven.
That's amazing. Congratulations, y'all. That's great. Well, let's make it a hundred. Just kidding. Um, so in terms of knowing who your students are, I mean, you as board members, especially in smaller communities, you can probably, you know, visibly see your students, right? Or go to events and be visibly there for your community, but it's really important that you understand you know, demographics, race, gender, academics, who participates maybe in special education classes, extracurricular activities? What kind of, what subgroups of students are attending those extracurricular activities? What's the socioeconomic status? How many of your students live in poverty? What's the graduation rates? How many didn't graduate last year? So now we know, right, it's ninety seven percent. But how many maybe didn't graduate last year and why, right? Asking those good governance questions. That is your role as a board. You need to rely on Joel, your superintendent, to get you that information and keep you informed. But you need to to make those correlation of what's happening, what are the patterns? Those, that is good governance questions. Attendance rate, right? We know these are all indicators for student outcomes. How many are absent and why? And again, making those correlations and also relying on, you know, Joel's going to get you that information you need as it ties to the district goals, as it ties to your role as a board. Right? So that's what we mean in terms of your governance role when it comes to understanding who your students are and what their needs are. I did provide a little sheet. This is the twenty three, twenty four from Oregon Department of Education. It's at a glance kind of some, some information about those indicators. They haven't put out yet the twenty four, twenty five, but when they do, it'd be nice to see a comparison, right? And kind of looking at that, that is something that maybe you, Joel, could look into when you are reporting on progress of the district goals. Again, connect it back to the district goals so that way the board stays focused on their role of ensuring that the district goals are being met. So that little activity for talking about culture and climate, you're absolutely right. And I loved hearing the ripple effects. That's what we say oftentimes, it's a causal chain. And it starts with you as individual board members, your beliefs, your why, your motivations as individuals. And then as a board too, understanding your roles and responsibilities, how decisions are made, how you support those decisions that get made. It's okay to agree to disagree, but once a decision is made, you ultimately have to support that, right? And what I mean by that is you know, if the community asks you, you can say, hey, I voted against it, but I support the will of the board. And this is, this is, this was the decision that was made. So that's kind of what we mean in terms of setting that positive board culture and climate, that unified versus uniform. Your culture, how you collaborate, how you talk to each other, your tone, even your body language during board meetings. It's, it sends that message. It's really important. Again, you are modeling the way for your students. And so you've got to do it with when you're having debates, having healthy debates. Again, okay to agree to disagree, okay to even have conflict, but know how to manage that conflict. And ask the questions and seek to understand your individual board members and the superintendent so that you're making the best decision for your students. Ultimately, that's the goal, is that you're asking those questions within your role and, you know, having that support and relying on your superintendent to get you that information so that you can make informed decisions. Ultimately, that has an impact on the organizational culture because the whatever expectations you set, that trickles down into what the expectations are for staff and for those teachers who are then in the classroom. So although you don't, you're not in the classrooms, you do have that impact of impacting students. And I've seen it, but I, the research also shows it. Okay, I like to say it's a domino effect that starts with you. So here's some research. How many of you have heard of the Lighthouse Studies? Scott, have you heard of the Lighthouse? I'm sorry to call you out, yes. And that's, and since then, there's been more research. We just like to make sure that we're up to date. My team, we're always constantly looking at best practices. Lighthouse really showed how board actions and behaviors have an impact with students outcomes. And so we're going to talk about Tom Alsberry, who now, you know, has found twelve standards that are associated with positive, with creating positive outcomes. So I'm going to walk you through those twelve standards in a bit. Before I do, I do want to talk a little bit of some don'ts, some of the don'ts to not do. So these are practices associated with negative impacts on student outcomes. We want to make sure that you are spending a lot of times talking about student about student needs, the just getting updates on the district goals, looking at data, asking questions, again, you know, seeing what's happening with the patterns, what's, you know, asking, relying on Joel to bring in maybe staff to give you presentations, to tell you the the full story of what's happening with the data. Data's great, numbers are great, but sometimes it doesn't tell the full picture. And again, asking those governance questions around tied to the district goals. The district goals are really your guidance for everything, your work in the boardroom. And that data should drive your decisions, right? Those discussions should drive your decisions. The recommendation and the information you're hearing from the superintendent drives your decisions. We want to make sure that anecdotes don't drive your decisions. Okay, and that's easier said than done, especially when you have many hats or you're a parent. But it's really important that as a board member, you really remove that and really look at the big picture. And this is, and and how is this impacting the system, right? If something is happening, it's not to say to dismiss it, right? If you hear rumblings or something, you know, happening in classrooms or vice versa. But you got to really put on your hat of how is this impacting the whole system? How is this impacting all of your students? Okay, so that's what we mean by that one around anecdotes and agendas. You want to make sure you have effective working relations, relationships with each other, with the superintendent. You, you know, you're all being respectful and getting the work done. You want to make sure you don't delay the work because when sometimes there's that conflict, that delays the work. And who gets impacted? Your students. And so when it happens, just knowing, okay, what can we do? Let's have a conversation. Maybe it's parliamentary procedure, et cetera. Maybe we need to do a training, whatever that may be. And then micromanagement, we want to make sure boards aren't micromanaging the day to day operations of the district. That is the role of the superintendent. We also tell boards, you don't want to do that. That's why you hire an expert in education. You need to trust the superintendent is going to get that work done. But again, having that support and ensuring that you're 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 supporting each other and getting the information you need to make informed decisions. And setting some clear expectations around that. Sometimes you may need a protocol around that. And then lastly, as I mentioned earlier, right, making sure you're not blaming external factors and really looking at a lot of different data indicators of what is it that's impacting your students. And before I walk you through the twelve standards, I want to just cover some foundational areas specifically around Dr. Tom Alsberry. He has this balanced governance approach. And so I want to just talk a little bit about that. So governance versus management. You as a board govern, superintendent manages, you identify the what, right? You make sure those, you you help identify those district goals, superintendent identifies the how, how it's going to get done with his team. So board, you adopt policy, superintendent implements those policies. Oftentimes, you'll see an A R attached to a policy code. That's administrative regulation. Boards, you adopt the budget, right? You want to make sure there's alignment with the district goals and the budget. Superintendent, the budgeting officer does the budget spending. And you're getting, getting the the picture here. Program adoption, program implementation, curriculum adoption, curriculum recommendation, community engagement. You both have a role there, right? We talked about that earlier. The superintendent publicly leads the district and absolutely can help sometimes send those bigger messages so everybody's getting that unified message. And boards knowing what information needs to be shared out, maybe around progress of the district goals, et cetera. Board, you're that informed oversight piece, holding the system accountable, monitoring what's happening with the district goals. And superintendent, you're providing that data and information so that the board has the information they need to make decisions around policies and budgets. Okay, that's governance essentials. This balanced governance piece from Dr. Tom Alsberry essentially is saying, we don't want boards to be rubber standboards, disengaged. We like to call them nodding heads. But we also don't want you to be on this other side of the continuum where you're overreaching and micromanaging the district, right? That's the role of your superintendent. You want to stay in the informed oversight. And you've got to do that together by communicating, setting clear expectations on how information is going to be given to you, requests for data. You have policy on that as well. Sometimes you may need to pull out those policies just as a reminder, especially when there's new board members. And just having that supportive culture and climate. Because you're a team and you're all on that same team of wanting to make the decisions that are Because you're a team and you're all on that same team of wanting to make the decisions that are going to impact your students positively the most. We don't want to see this. And yes, I know I need to change the image. It's a strawberry versus a marshmallow. Clearly the marshmallow is heavy, the strawberry is heavier. Um, but again, in terms of your relationship, it's really key that you have that supportive culture and that you cultivate that trust and ask questions and set up those systems before you need them. Here's a really great analogy in terms of your role, um, of governance versus management. I stole this from my colleague Vince and a lot of boards, it's a great way to just retain information instead of just talking and verbally saying things. Um, so here in this image, the pilot is the superintendent. Um, when you purchase, you know, a, a flight, you choose that destination. Um, and then you trust that that pilot is trained and is going to get you to that destination safely. Now, there might be bumps around the road. I don't know how many of you have experienced turbulence before. I know I have. Um, and you still, again, are trusting that you're going to get there safely because there's a trained professional um, driving that plane. So similar to the superintendent, but you have expectations, right? You have expectations of those trusted. The key point here is that in this analogy, we trust our aviation professional, but we still have expectations on their performance. And the same goes for boards and superintendents. You have to set those clear expectations. You have to hold the system accountable by measuring and monitoring district goals, doing a superintendent evaluation, um, et cetera. Boards impact superintendent leadership. This is rooted in research. They app, you absolutely impact their leadership. These are the three standards. Community engagement, using data for accountability and culture responsiveness, um, where the research shows that you have influence in the leadership of your superintendent. And I'll walk you through those. So again, let's take a little bit of a closer look. Community engagement. When boards support meaningful advisory committees, encourage admin and teachers to involve families, right? Doing some meaningful community engagement, building trust in the community. Um, having that trust gives your superintendent the backing to lead with confidence and direction. Um, using data for continuous improvement. We've been talking a lot about data. Um, but boards that expect and use high-quality data, not just test scores, again, looking at lots of different, um, data indicators, multiple sources, um, is going to help, um, empower your superintendent as well in making sure there's alignment, um, with the standards. Culture responsively, responsiveness, um, boards promote inclusive practices, celebrate diversity. Just ensure students see themselves reflected in curriculum. Um, again, all of these areas help create those conditions for your superintendent to inspire and motivate the entire system. So I just wanted to, in terms of that question I asked you earlier, of why is the board superintendent relationship matter? This is why. This is partly why. There's a lot of reasons why, but this is, um, one of the reasons and, and the research, um, shows this. Um, just very briefly, the leadership team. So we got the board, right? Um, authority, direction, oversight, superintendent, that leader in expertise, implements policies. Um, also the board clerk secretary helps ensure compliance with processes, um, really supports the board and superintendent. And all of these intersectionalities, um, overall district leadership lead to leadership effect, efficacy. Okay, just kind of nice to see. And again, I'll share these slides. Um, so don't feel like you need to take pictures or write all of this down, but just want to show you kind of the overlap and the team. And how you all support each other to ensure your students are successful. Okay. So how do you get there? I kept mentioning the twelve standards. So I'm going to walk you through those and, um, kind of show you what does that look like in real time. Um, I kind of talked a little bit about this with the analogy of the plane. Um, you know, boards, it's really important for you to set the direction of where you want your students to be. What does success look like at Cook County School District? Um, what does it mean to, when a student graduates? What does that look like? Um, really important to do that, um, but you have to do it collaboratively with the superintendent and with the community to identify what are the needs for your students to be successful. Now, sometimes this process, vision-directed planning, it's, it's a part, it's the strategic planning process. Um, can be done at the beginning if you're starting a new strategic plan. Uh, but it is important for boards to review the goals every year. Um, and again, to also set up a system where you are getting progress, um, regularly of what's happening with the district goals. Community engagement, um, what can that look like? Well, it's really important. I think when it comes to vision-directed planning, that is a really meaningful way to engage the community, whether that's in person, whether that's through surveys. Um, there are ways for you to meaningfully engage with the community. Um, you can do town halls, listening sessions. Um, you know, there's lots and multiple ways to engage with the community around gathering input, um, to help you identify, you know, what are the needs for your students to succeed. And tying it back to the district goals. Effective leadership, um, the board, you know, again, when I was talking about how important it is that your meetings are focused around and you're getting information and having discussions about student needs, um, about student outcomes, so keeping seventy-five to eighty percent of your meeting time on strategic topics. Um, maybe you are setting, you know, to be effective leaders, operating agreements so that you completely define your roles. Um, maybe, you know, having clear superintendent evaluation goals. Um, that, all of that, even what you're doing now is being an effective leader. So boards that focus on student outcomes, respect their roles, understand your roles, understand the difference between governance and management. Accountability, I mean, just as I was mentioning, right? It's important to hold the system accountable and do a superintendent evaluation, but you have to hold your performance accountable too. Um, we say boards, you know, we just did that at the beginning, just very informally, you know, what are some strengths of the board? What are some areas of growth? There are assessments you could do, uh, board self-assessment and just kind of have that conversation, you know, to, to kind of see, all right, what trainings and topics do we need to dive deeper into? So it is important for you also to hold each other accountable, um, just like you hold the system accountable too. Using data for continuous improvement. I talked a lot about this, but it's really important to, you know, making sure that you're getting meaningful, quality, high-quality data. Um, data can look a lot of different ways. It doesn't always necessarily have to be qualitative. It could be quantitative too. Um, I think that's also really valuable, um, data to collect. And again, relying on the superintendent and their team to bring you that information tied to the district goals so that you are monitoring prog, uh, the being able to identify gaps between, um, current realities and desired outcomes. And then also kind of determining how the board communicates to the public, how decisions are linked to data. Um, sometimes after monitoring sessions, after, you know, getting progress updates on the data, on the district goals, um, boards can kind of come up with an, a plan with the superintendent of, okay, what do we communicate now to the, to the community? You know, maybe Joel, you can post something on the website or, you know, and then the community, the board knows the talking points of what can be shared with the community. So you're all, again, having that unified message. Culture responsiveness, I talked a little bit about this, um, but really it's just, um, ensuring that, um, you know, boards, um, are reviewing policies with that culture responsive lens. Um, you know, making decisions through a court, courtually responsive lens, like making sure that you are meeting your students where they're at. You're meeting each and every one of your students where they're at. Um, you know, and, and putting into consideration all those different, um, facets that I mentioned earlier, right? Race, gender, um, socioeconomic status, et cetera. Really, you know, understanding who your students are, looking at the data that, at, at a glance, uh, data that I just showed you from ODE. Culture and climate, which we already talked a little bit about, but again, it's a more, um, full, um, debate. Um, using parliamentary procedure if you need it, um, use as little as much as, as you need. Um, looking at what your policy says around some forms of Robert's Rules of Order. Um, your board operating agreements can help sometimes maintain that culture and climate, especially if sometimes there's conflict on the board. Um, and oftentimes, y'all, it's all about communication. So making sure that you're understanding and that those expectations you have set for each other or with the superintendent are clear. Um, you know, I always tell boards, don't assume bad intent, right? You're all, again, on the same team. You all want your students to succeed. So, um, hear each other out and, and try to seek to understand each other and not make assumptions. Once there's assumptions, that's when sometimes things can go sideways. And so, um, really important to, to remember that in terms of maintaining that positive culture and climate. And as you all said, it ultimately delays the work when there is that conflict. And, you know, or you're just kind of going back and forth. So again, parliamentary procedure can help with that. We just did a webinar. All of our web, our webinars are free, um. That one in particular, there is sometimes some paid webinars, but that one is free. Um, for sometimes, you know, for boards to know, sometimes you may need more information. And instead of just talking and talking over that discussion item, right? Using some of those, um, some of those motions to help you making those decisions. Learning organization, um, this is just that you as boards support, um, professional learning for staff, right? In terms of setting the direction, uh, making sure that your superintendent feels empowered, again, right? To, to be able to, um, have those opportunities for their staff and for boards too, for you to have that time to reflect, um, on what's working and not working. Standard, not thinking. So this is around boards, um. You know, we don't want boards, we want boards to, uh, to avoid policy decisions that shift problems from one part of the system to another. Um, we encourage, you know, organizational structure that enables creative processes. Um, you know, really staying informed. And as I mentioned earlier, Joel is probably attending all of those meetings with other superintendents, um, you know, getting information maybe from Education Service District, um, to keep you informed and making sure that those partnerships and you're staying informed of what's happening at the state, national level. Um, you know, considering, um, how decisions are impacting, um, across the system. So for systems thinking, the board, you're very solution-oriented. You collaborate with other organizations. You encourage dialogue for the benefit of the district, right? It's important to leverage those, those partnerships. Innovation and creativity, that is around how to problem solve creatively. And again, just like, um, what I mentioned earlier, setting that time, making sure you have work sessions carved out. And that's why sometimes it's important to just have an assessment of what's working, what's not working. You don't want to get too overwhelmed as a board and, and create all of these board goals for yourself, but you want to make sure that, um, you do have that space where you feel like you are just want to make sure you're not becoming a rubber stamp board. But again, it's that balance, right, of making sure you're staying in that governance role, asking good governance questions and working together and ensuring and, um, knowing that you got to trust the superintendent to get you that information that you need. Standard eleven, board conduct ethics and superintendent relationship. This is around, um, roles and responsibilities, um, understanding your roles. Um, kind of goes a little bit with the culture and climate as well. Um, having a clear mutual understanding of your respective roles, yours and the superintendent's. Um, and making sure, again, that, uh, you're having respectful communication. Standard twelve, budgeting and financial accountability. I mentioned it earlier. It is important for boards for you to make sure that, um, allocations are aligning with the district goals. Um, oftentimes a great way to hear that is through the budget narrative. Um, I'm not going to sure-code it. This is going to be an area that, um, you know, a lot of boards are going to be making, you know, because of the state level, um, tough decisions. So it's important to make sure that you're staying informed, um, aligning it again with the district goals, making sure you're getting those quarterly financial reports, um, maybe even doing trainings. For those of you who are attending annual convention, ODE is going to be doing one on the state school funds just so you understand the role of the board when it comes to that. Um, a lot of the themes are going to be around, um, budgets. And it's important for boards to, again, hold the system accountable, but have that oversight role when it comes to the budget. Not looking at every single line item, but really focusing on where is this showing up? Where are the allocations aligning with the district goals and what are students need? Okay, no, that was a lot of standards I just walked you through. What is resonating with you? Anything jump out? Anything, um, capture your attention of like, ooh? You know, I, I would love to dive deeper, not now, but like, I would love to dive deeper with the board or discuss a certain topic further down the line. It's resonating. I saw some of you jot down notes.
Looking towards the spokesperson.
What?
You know, I, I, I think just reflecting back on about seven months together, Kevin, Kevin joined us a little late.
Yeah.
Um, but going through those standards, we're, we're fortunately at a really good place where I feel we've, uh, a really good foundation over these six months. I think what Scott mentioned earlier on, like, we haven't really been tested with a big conflict yet where I think Jen Scott and I previously had enough conflict to last us a decade. But, um, but yeah, I, I, I think we've laid some good foundations. I think just continuing to grow, I think of what Kelsey mentioned earlier of just, when you become a new board member, districts are incredibly complex organizations. So just knowing how everything connects, I think, just takes time. So, um, I, I'm real optimistic because I think we have a board that's eager to learn. And then also, um, some board members, you know, even though Jen's done it, I think two or three years, I think she's got enough experience. Uh, or about two decades with what we went through. So I, I, I think we're a great mix and yeah, I think just continuing to build off success that we've had.
Yeah, absolutely. Anything else?
I think we have been, okay, I can't speak for the board. I can speak for me. I have been blessed to have Mr. Cooper, uh, at my right hand or my left side, depending on the night.
Um.
In your ear.
Uh-huh, in my ear, uh, for the last few years because if it wasn't for him, I don't know that I'd still be sitting here. So I, his knowledge and his wisdom and his experience, um, has been just such a wealth of information. And I learn something new all the time from him, whether I tell him that or not. But, um, that, that experience is just like, it's, it's, I'm just blessed by it because I'd be lost without him. I'll give him that. I would be lost without him.
That is the nicest thing you've ever said to me.
That's great. No, that's awesome. And that's really important. I, and we actually are creating, um, a new board membership manual. My, my colleague Jen, she helps a lot with admin professionals. Um, and that's part of it is like boards creating mentorships. That's super important, like to support each other. Board chairs, you know, previous, you know, who has more experience, um. Having one-on-ones too with the superintendent, like that is all super important in terms of creating that culture and climate, right? We're talking about that, but like, how that can happen is what you just, um, demonstrated right now, Jennifer. Like what you just shared about Scott and empowering your other individual board members to be like, oh, you know, maybe three years, I'm going to be saying that like about some other board member. So I think that was, uh, that was really great. And that's modeling that leadership. So thank you for sharing that.
And I think you hit a good word mentorship. Like that's, that calculates or encapsulates everything that Scott has done for me. I can't speak for us the board, but for me, um, you know, and I'm, I'm, I can't learn, I, I want to learn more. I wish I could just sit with him every day for like a month, just to pick his brain and let him just blow all of his wisdom my way to be a better board. So.
Well, it's a steep learning curve, right? Especially new board members. I'm sure you're experiencing that. It's a steep learning curve. Um, and that's, you know, that's why I'm really, I'm proud of y'all for doing the board governance essentials training. And, you know, I walked through a lot of these standards and I, my hope is that as you embark in this journey, you remember something I said and then start to make the dots, right? In a, in a training, you maybe aren't going to be able to, you know, and I say, what's resonating? You're like, well, I'm not sure, Janet. We need to put this into practice first. Um, you know, it's always okay to then have questions later on. Great. Anybody else have anything to share in terms of what's resonating?
I I do just want to shout out to our superintendent. Because our superintendent is the youngest superintendent in the state of Oregon, believe it or not. However, there is nothing he has not seen in this district all the time he has been here. And there have been three inflection points when he could have separated himself forever from us. He always chose to come back to us and I think we are indeed blessed. With his leadership at this critical moment and he's really helped smooth the new board. Getting into its groove and, you know, calming down the district, allowing us to govern. And I think that speaks so much to what makes for an effective board is when you have that sense of partnership. With your staff leader and you feel like you're pulling in the same direction and Joel really has brought us that and it makes an enormous difference. So thank you, Joel.
Yes, thank you, Joel.
Well, um, the next uh section here is scenarios. Um, but do you all, how are you feeling? Do you maybe need like a two, thir- three minute stretch break? Bathroom break before we jump into scenarios and putting things into practice?
We need a break?
I'm okay.
We just need.
Are you okay, Tammy? No.
A little stretch break, yeah, from typing. Okay. You let me know. Alright, so this is usually the fun part, um, at least that's what boards tell us, um, when it comes to this training. So we're going to practice some scenarios, hypothetical scenarios, um. And we're going to start easy and this is also a great way to see if you're retaining the information of that I just shared. So we'll start easy. Is it board work to establish the strategic priorities of the district?
Yes.
Thumbs up, yeah, okay, thumbs up. Maybe give me a thumbs up, thumbs down, or if you're not sure, you can put it to the side. Alright, cool. Okay, yes, it is. And sometimes the terminology varies, can be called district goals, strategic priorities, pillars. Um, but correct, you set the direction for the district, um, but it's done collaboratively, remember that. How about tracking progress of district priorities and goals? Tracking progress, I see some on the side.
Bring you the data or you the track.
Okay.
We're monitoring.
Yeah.
That's right.
Okay, good.
They're not pulling the data, but we're getting it together.
And maybe the question is, should you read Joel's reports?
Yes, you should.
Yes, should you be getting reports from Joel so that you can track progress of the district goals? Yep. So in that case, because I did see somebody maybe put a thumb to the side, so everybody thumbs up?
Yeah, no.
Okay, perfect. Great. Alright, well, let's keep it going. During a recent presentation by the superintendent. A board member questioned the lack of detail in the disaggregated student results for each district goal. While the data provided a good global view of student success in the district. The board member wanted to see the data broken down by individual classrooms in each school, so they can evaluate individual teacher effectiveness. Is this the role of the board? Thumbs down, thumbs down, I'm seeing a lot of thumbs down. Uh, why? Why isn't this the role of the board? Those of you.
Micro management and you're supposed to be trusting your staff and superintendent to do that. If it was across cohorts, like not individual teachers, but rather performance of student groups, then yes.
Evaluate individual teacher effectiveness.
It's not your role to evaluate individual, yep, classrooms, teachers, right? That is, that is an administrative role, yeah.
I mean, I I would argue, as I'll probably argue for every one of these, it depends. And the reason I say that is because there was at one point a national movement for boards to do exactly this. It was a very controversial thing, but many boards were asking for data down to that level because it was believed to be the best. Governance practice report. It's not now, now we take the micro management view of that, but it depends on the culture that you're operating in.
Well, we would advise not to do it by individual classrooms. Um, but yeah, I also too will say in smaller communities that this can be a little tricky, um, especially because you could reveal. Um, you know, identify a specific teacher or a student, so you got to be careful, especially. Um, or communities. Yeah, but you should be looking at that global view, right? Asking those good governance questions around, you know, what's happening with the data here, how is it correlating with other indicators? And how is this aligning with the district goals?
Yeah, I think the only like counter argument I would say is, is if you're trying to understand if it's truly a global. Root cause or if there's a couple outliers, classrooms that are bringing down a particular data set. But not from a performance management perspective of of individual teachers, it's more trying to understand the global.
I'd still argue that your principals and administration should be tracking that and then having the conversations with the individual teachers themselves.
Well, yeah, I like, and I'm not arguing that we.
Oh, yeah.
But but it's it's more to understand the kind of the data is.
I hear what you're saying. I just don't know if it's our role, but yes, understanding the data, I get that.
But but I remember a few decades ago. Probably was decades.
Gather around.
The Atlanta school, I think it was Atlanta, it was Chicago. The board ordered every teacher in the district to take a reading test to see if their teachers could read.
Thank you.
And found that they could indeed not. And you know, it was shocking level of board micromanagement, but it was also addressing a very big problem. But if you can't read yourself, you certainly can't teach students to read.
Well, how did they get a degree then?
Good question.
But again, I think what tying back to what you were saying, um. When it's tied to that performance piece, that is an administrative role, right? And that's to ensure that, you know, um, why is that happening, right? And that's the role of the administrative side, the when it ties back to the performance. Because your role is to evaluate the performance of the superintendent and setting that direction. But Joel, you know, then oversees and um, you know, the principals who manage and like the administrator's side. That's there, you know, there should be some sort of, right, performance kind of. For those teach, of course, performance evaluations for those teachers too. But that's not your role as the board.
Generally, I agree with you. I would also argue that if you have scores which are taking a nosedive year after year. You have raised this issue repeatedly with your superintendent, he can't seem to get ahead of it.
Or she.
Or she, or them. Don't have, at at some point, you know, firing the superintendent isn't going to turn things around at that point. You're going to need to, you have time to wait, you're going to need to dig in a little deep, more deeply in your role. Your ultimate responsibility is to ensure children are educated.
Yeah, and that's why it's important to set those clear expectations and. That evaluation and what are you evaluating the superintendent on and what are the district goals and how, where does this show up, right? So that you're ensuring that students are getting um the education they need. Joel, do you have anything to add?
It depends.
It depends, yes. Joel, do you have anything to add if this was you and a board member was, uh, if this was happening?
Oh, Jen, I have so much to add. So yeah, I I I think we're all in agreement that the board's not responsible for evaluating such a performance based on test scores. I think the broader conversation is around, the district does look at test scores, um, and and not necessarily. Oh, this is Ms. Smith's test scores and this is Ms. Jones' test scores. But I think you have a board goal around horizontal support and services, so we do want to be looking at. Hey, are we seeing any classrooms that are off the charts doing great without the teacher name? But then say, hey, this class, this fifth grade class is doing awesome. Well, this fifth grade class is kind of struggling. How can we in like a P L C model say, well, how can we fill the the hole tide to get all teachers up? So so yeah, not evaluating teachers, but we definitely want to be looking at classroom level data without staff names and seeing what's working and what's not.
Yeah, and identifying the gaps and the needs and maybe there needs to be professional training for for teachers, yeah, yeah. Absolutely. Somebody going to say something? Sorry. Okay, let's try another scenario, because there's a few. How about this, during a recent board meeting, a board member rejected the proposed vision statement. We succeed when students thrive, all means all. They indicated that it was impossible for each student to achieve at a high level. Many students don't have the support at home necessary for them to be successful, said the board member. This is an impossible goal and should not be approved by the board. So what might be the impact here if the goal is, if this goal is not approved? Let's say the board members were going back and forth on this and couldn't come to a decision.
I mean, do they have an alternate goal suggestion versus just an all or nothing?
Yeah.
Right? What else? Maybe?
Because that that leads to lack of direction there, right there.
I mean, I think the situation is that some students with high support at school or at home are going to succeed and some aren't. And we're just going to accept that reality for what it is, is like kind of the risk of how that might impact. The culture versus. We believe in all students. But I think there is this other nuance of like successes go with different, different kiddos.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so it's kind of like if this was happening, right? Understanding, you know, maybe sometimes asking more, like tell me more and trying to seek to understand what is it that. Why is this statement not okay, right? If that individual board member is maybe saying it, and again. It's ultimately going to be the decision of the whole board, but it is important too to like ask those questions and kind of figure out and and hear everybody out. Um, as to what is it, what is it here that's giving that board member pause, right?
I like the rewrite idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could ask to, yeah, you can maybe rewrite it. How would you rewrite it? What's without still creating an impact?
Well, it depends on what part is the board members hung up on, I believe, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, sometimes one of us will pick out a word that just doesn't work in a, in a statement or a policy and then we have conversations around that word. And then we always come to a, a new word and then it works for everybody, so um, I guess it just kind of depends on. Where the board members hung up on, on which part of this.
It'd be shifting their mindset too, because I think the implication is that. They're saying that you you can't achieve, everybody can't achieve, so we should lower our sights. Whereas to something that they can achieve. And I don't know, maybe they had to add something in like, you know, understanding that people aren't always going to meet their goals, doesn't make it a failure.
Right.
To set that goal.
And remember what I said earlier about setting high expectations and the belief that all students can and will learn, right? We talked about um, making sure you're not blaming external factors. And this is that, you know, you can bring it back to that, like, hey, we did a training, you know, right, like, you need to make sure, right, that you're not, um. That you're bringing it back to that belief of, you know, you have to set those high expectations for your students when they walk into the door.
Or you could uh set goals to a, address those situational failures. Like what we're going through with the SNAP benefits and everything right now in the food pantry and that kind of stuff. We recommend that as an obstacle and maybe we need to do something about that.
Yeah, I think what I really appreciate about anytime we've had a debate in Jen Yearfounding, because it's like. We call it, I'm like, no, no grenade watching, like, no, just being like, oh, I I just don't like that, you know, and it's like, that's just not. What's her to do that and so.
I'm, I'm fascinated by the premise that you could ever not get the goal approved because one board member objected.
Good catch. That's right, and well, remember I said, ultimately, it's the decision of the board, but if you have an individual. You want to try to, you know, you want to come to that common ground, sometimes you won't though, right? I think that's important to highlight as well, yeah.
But the end, at the end of the day, if you can count to three, you win.
Very true, very true, but again, right, um, yeah, in this scenario, you know, and sometimes like. I think somebody said you won't be able to change that mindset, but at least understand and let that individual know, like, okay, yes, we hear you and the chair, right? Making sure that everybody gets a chance to speak once and that's sometimes where parliamentary procedure can help. Making sure everybody speaks once before another board member speaks, so that way everybody feels it's a fair process and everybody's getting that opportunity to, to share.
I I think it really helps as a board member, if you keep in mind during a board meeting, that your fellow board member always has the right to be wrong.
Yeah. That is very true, yeah. Alright, let's try another scenario. Good discussion, y'all. Okay, this one's very layered. An upset staff member who is also a parent. Approaches you at the grocery store and asks if you can please help them with a complaint about their child's teacher. Their student's teacher has been addressing and grading them unfairly and the staff member believes it is retaliation for a tough parent teacher conference. From earlier in the year. They met, they have to be interacting with the teacher and have been unsuccessful and now they fear retaliation in their own job. So what do you do as a board member in this situation?
Misery and direct them to the policy.
I'm so sorry.
Direct them to the policy. What else?
I think that shortens.
That is.
Empathize and say, here's the policy and here's Dr. Hoff's information.
Here's your means of escalation.
Would you let uh Joel know, your superintendent? About this?
Depends on how I'm feeling about it that day.
Depends on what?
How I'm feeling about him that day.
Wow.
First call usually goes to Tammy, so she takes the.
In terms of keeping each other informed.
General, generally, I would let Joel know, but if there, if letting Joel know would come at the risk of harm. To that person who's talking to me, I might be more circumspect about how I described it. And the second thing I would want to look at in this report is, is there an element of whistleblower in there? That I have to go through the whistleblower process to decide what to do with this information and again, that's uh, it depends.
Yes, it does, and this one, like I said, it's layered because this is a staff member who is also a parent, right? And so sometimes when it comes to, I love what you said, yes, absolutely, direct them to the policy. Don't tell them to file a complaint, but you can absolutely direct them to the policy, um. You know, it can become a slippery slope and so it is important to to know, you know, sometimes, um. This may be potentially an area that you'll need legal advice on, right?
What, like why?
Why? Because of the, well, why do you think?
Is there a staff member?
I, well, I guess like, because I I look at this because. They've tried connecting with the teacher. But I don't understand even like where the fear of retaliation from their job, because it doesn't seem like administrators. Involved yet, like the, right, like.
Yeah, it seems like just from the information on that paragraph. Jumping to legal advice might, might escalate more than you need. I think uh, this happens. A hundred times each school year where someone approaches the superintendent or administrator with with an issue at. Ninety-eight out of a hundred times, it usually gets or typically gets resolved at at that level. Um, and and we try to facilitate that and Jen used the word blessed. I I think we've been blessed so far where. There's been an issue probably from each one of you on a various thing when, and you always give a heads up and and we're able to. We always try to deal with things at the lowest possible level, um, so so that's what, that's our go-to stance on this, is lowest possible level.
This might be.
Your policy, your policy says that too.
Yes.
It's the last stop, not the first. However, in the community, right, we always say, nobody knows what a board member does and neither does, um. Until you rat, you know, until you're in the position and so neither does the community, we often say that. So sometimes it is, you know, letting them know there's a process. You know, in this situation, they did already connect with the teacher and it was unsuccessful, so then the next step would be, right? Follow this step in the, in the process, yeah.
So, so Janet, why did you say that you would get a legal, what what am I missing here?
Um, well, sometimes. Um, well, sometimes it can go down slippery slope, I think um because as a staff member, it could lead up, hopefully it doesn't escalate to that point, but if it does ever get to an escalated point, then sometimes you may want to get um, you know, legal advice on some, on some public complaints, not always, it depends. We're always gonna be risk adverse, but I do agree with what Joel said, that, you know, you don't wanna escalate it, you always wanna start at the lowest possible level, which is what your policy says as well. So that's a K L sample. Oh, this one can be fun, so board members post a question on Facebook asking for their input on math teachers' behavior. They state that their daughter is upset because of the way the teacher runs the classroom and wants to know if others are having the same concerns. They make themselves available for questions by text, email, and social media. The board member goes to the superintendent and shows them the concerns wanting something to change immediately. The board member also emails other board members for their input and tells the superintendent that if they do not address this concern immediately, they will bring it up at the next board meeting. So what's going well here? Nothing?
Definitely nothing.
Okay, what, what is it that's not going well?
There you go, Eric just found the positive.
Yeah, they're paying attention to her daughter's class.
What's, how about what's not going well then?
From.
Social media.
Day to the end.
In terms of the role of the board, right?
The whole thing.
Yeah, I think everything's, everything's wrong on that.
Everything, except for they're paying attention to their daughter.
That's a good thing, though, I guess.
This piece, they um, they make themselves available for questions by text, email, and social media.
Well, and that, just being a board member, calling it out on Facebook is, I, I don't know why that would be a great idea. Or that you then decided to, you know, go to all the other board members.
I say, there's about three or four policy. Talking about specific staff members in a public forum. Um, there's this issue with the board member emailing the other board members um, input. They are correct where policy, they could ask for an agenda to be put on the, you know.
In the blackmail and, and.
I need the big X button.
But here they're using their, you're absolutely right, y'all are touching on it, using their authority, which they can't as an individual. They cannot speak on behalf of the board unless they have the authority to do so. They're not being respectful, right, they're going and demanding, right, to the superintendent do this, or the blackmail, as you said, right, or I'm gonna bring it up to the board. They're gathering, and they're gathering all this information and data and, and presenting it to other individual board members, which could create a serial meeting. Even if it's just one individual board member having conversation, but then that individual board member has a conversation around the same kinda topic and issue or district business. Right? Yes, there's a lot going wrong here. Now, um, we always advise, you know, we tell boards, you know, as an individual, not speaking on behalf of the board, like here, or um, posting that you're a board member. You know, you have your own personal accounts, but regardless whether what you post is right or wrong, especially in smaller communities, you're gonna be perceived as a board member, the community knows who you are, and so whether what you post is right or wrong, uh, there's that perception. And that can create impact, right?
You guys, you guys typically know OSBA uses real-life examples, is this a real-life example?
Happened, yes, I usually get, when I bring this one up, chuckles, um, yep.
This is, this is one that cries out for intervention from the chair. This is when it's not pleasant to, you have to call your fellow board member and lay out some protocols, including the last one where you say, if you bring this up, I will gavel you out of order. We're not gonna talk about next meeting, and you need to act like a board member.
Yeah, I love that you bring that up, Scott, cuz we always say, try to address it at the lowest level too, when there's that conflict, and sometimes those protocols, especially, you know, with the chairs having this conversation, or even if it's the chair and it's the vice chair having a conversation with the chair, if they're not abiding by the standards of conduct. Um, if you have some sort of protocol or an operating agreement, that, or bringing up the policy too, like, hey, this is what we have to right, bringing it up at that lowest level is, is great.
I only say it because I'm not chair, so it's not my problem.
But did you not just hear that sometimes the vice chair has to intervene too? Oh, yeah, we have a meeting disruption guidance and uh, yeah, alright, great.
Just to make you do something.
This one should be straightforward, but we'll see, the board held an executive session last week dealing with a student. This week at the post office, a community member approached you and asked you a specific question about something that was discussed in executive session. What do you do? How do you respond to this individual?
Where did you hear that?
I actually heard a board, I did this with the board and they were like, don't go digging, like, just let them know. You know, there's certain reasons we can and cannot hold executive session. Don't go dig in, asking those questions like you just asked. Yeah. Yeah, there's a, there's statutes, um, we have an FAQ around executive sessions, there's a whole policy you have, I believe it's uh, code B D C around executive sessions. Um, so knowing the reasons when you can and cannot hold it. Tammy, I'm sure you, you know, posting them, making sure they're posted, the statute for when you're holding um, executive sessions is really important.
I, I do think one thing you have to remember in this particular scenario is what you are discussing in the executive session may be paralleled with what other people are discussing in other forums in the community. So you can't necessarily jump to the conclusion that just because they're asking you about it means they knew about the executive session. Those may be cor- correlation.
Good point, this we got the.
Our report could have been released and then everybody knows.
Slippery slope, right, cuz you wanna make sure you don't share anything about exec, yeah.
This is the district where the local Facebook reporter posted our executive session online, so.
Recording.
Then everyone knew about it.
Yeah, good times, good times.
Yeah. Anything else? Okay, well, if you haven't taken it, they talk about the do's and don'ts for executive session, um, and like I said, you also have policy. And we have an FAQ on executive sessions as well. Alright, how about this? Received several phone calls from people in the compete, community complaining because the superintendent has um has not renewed a well-liked teacher, the board member is familiar with the teacher and believes they have done a good job, the board member indicates to community members that they will personally investigate the situation. While discussing the issue with the superintendent, the board member requests to see all the data relevant to the dismissal. The superintendent denies the request and the board member states they have a right to this information. What's the role of the board here? What's going well, not going well?
Well, in this district, it would be very unlikely that a teacher would be suddenly let go without an executive session of the board or the superintendent, we usually obtain resignations if we're gonna have a departure like that, that don't require board intervention. If it was gonna be a flat-out termination, staff would usually tell the board in advance. And the place to have this conversation would be in that executive session with everybody present. Led by the superintendent.
And what about this line, the board member indicates to community members that they will personally investigate the situation?
Yeah, no.
Exactly. And what about this, while discussing the issue with the superintendent, the board requests to see all the data relevant to the dismissal. This is one board member, right?
Right.
Right.
That would be the topic of the executive session that would eventually be held.
If we get to that point.
Yeah, with our, with our principles, you know, if we're moving down the direction of non-renewal, a lot of the sayings we use is the employee shouldn't be surprised, the superintendent should shouldn't be in, all of a sudden, someone is getting non-renewed, and I think that's the crux of the issue where, where I think in this district do a much better job of making a really long runway and, and making sure to communicate what's appropriate and also what's not appropriate um, to the board, so they're in a loop.
I'd also say there's a stressed relationship between the board and the superintendent in that scenario, because I can't imagine just having a question and being, not having the trust to say, like, I'm not gonna put that out in the community, like, why is this person acting like, oh, okay. That's fine, whatever.
I, I can only think of two occasions in seventeen years where we, it wasn't a case with non-renewal, we needed to do a mid-year termination for cause. And the situation couldn't get resolved, and there was no question, once we heard the details, that the superintendent was absolutely in the right.
But it wasn't just one board member, I mean.
No, no, it was a whole board thing, it was that big, I mean, when you do a mid-year termination, not one where you've been on a plan of existence, it's a big deal, it's a really big deal, and something really wrong has happened in the background. To get there, it's almost never happens.
Well, I'm glad to hear you haven't had this come up, and also, um, I love what you said, Joel, of like this isn't gonna come up because there should be no surprises, yeah. It is February, and the board is discussing the superintendent's evaluation process. In the past, the board's process has been very informal with no adopted procedure. One board member suggests the current informal process works and is fair. Another board member suggests contacting OSBA for guidance. According to the superintendent's contract, the evaluation is due by March fifteenth, and the superintendent has not been involved in this discussion thus far, what should the board do? Does the board need to follow a certain procedure for superintendent evaluation?
If they don't have a policy for it.
Right, that's the thing.
Better carry on and then address it after the next one.
I think there was.
There'd be a policy or some procedure.
Your process, does that happen? There's not one at places, other places?
Oh, yeah.
And this piece of February, yes, I get sometimes phone calls in February where then it's like, oh, we gotta do something, or maybe even um, December, which I would say is late. Um, you wanna start the process early. Uh, especially if the contract says, you know, the, the deadline is March, making sure there's no surprises. Um, I guess, what is your process right now?
I have good news for this, unless you wanna share something with it. Uh, we do plan in December um, to talk through the evaluation process of the superintendent, so typically, we bring some examples of, here's some rubrics you can use, um, from what I've seen in Scott Kirkman's. I've seen a wide variety. Janet's actually mentioned that she has some examples as well, so in December, um, we'll have, we have an agenda, I'm gonna say here's three or four examples, uh, what is a timeline, what, what do you guys wanna do, so that's something, well, we'll, we'll stay ahead of.
My most memorable one I remember was one where we had a process, everybody had agreed. We put a member in charge of the process, because the board member was very desirous to be engaged. And when we got to the process, the board member had gone off on their own tangents, like a hundred and eighty degrees. And suddenly, we had in front of us all this stuff that nobody asked for, nobody wanted, was not the way we were wanting to evaluate. And then what do you do? Because, you know, you now have this steaming pile and you need to create a fair evaluation, it was, it was, it was awful. I think that's the year we actually didn't do any evaluation, we just didn't because, just give a raise and move on, because it was such a mess.
Right, a steaming pile.
What you don't want, so definitely discuss the process early with the superintendent. You know, set those, like, what's the criteria, what's the tool you're gonna use, whether it's our tool or some other, it doesn't have to be ours, but you wanna make sure too that you're looking at the contract and making sure you're meeting those deadlines, the policy too, sometimes we'll have deadlines. Um, we recommend March fifteenth, um, it's a twelve-month cycle, if you use our workbook that we developed with COSA. Um, and it has eight standards to evaluate the superintendent, and it's a five-part piece, I'm happy to share more information about that at a later time, but the key piece here is, yes, you know, when you're talking about the process, it should be done in open session. And you should, together with the superintendent, decide what that process, that tool is going to be. How are you gonna evaluate the superintendent? There should be no surprises, the superintendent evaluation should be a really positive experience, because you want your superintendent to succeed, because if your superintendent succeeds, your students, the staff are succeeding, right? So that's the key piece here, um, yeah, this is a little exaggerated, but it does happen to me, where I will get frantic phone calls. Can you help us, Janet, with the evaluation? So.
For you, so I've seen this happen before, so you, evaluation, it's a process, it's fair. And end of the process, the board would like to make a few suggestions to the superintendent about how to improve their practice. But the superintendent has a fragile ego and will absolutely fall apart if you give them anything less than a perfect score on everything. I might, you might have seen some of this. So, I mean, the board is like caught between a rock and a hard place, they don't wanna lose their superintendent and disrupt their district, but they also know what they're doing is an overstatement. It's where, how would you handle that?
I think, again, it's important to set those clear expectations and to understand what these ratings mean, we're gonna use this rubric. Stations at the beginning, um, so that's why it is important to, together, figure out what that process is and understand the process. Including even, um, how are you gonna evaluate the superintendent, so if you use our process, it's really around evidences. The superintendent gets an opportunity to share their um artifacts of evidence, right, the, the board should be evaluated on the past twelve months, not basing it off um again, like anecdotal quotes or anything like that, really tied to the standards, really focused on the district goals, if there were um, superintendent goals that were created based on their performance the previous year, how are those getting addressed? Really having those conversations around, um, you know, depending on the rubric, if you use ours, it's a four-point scale, what does that four mean, right? A three is not bad, a two is not bad, but like, we want you to become a three, um, having those conversations, um, I think at the beginning is really important. How you can maybe avoid that, or having a facilitator can also help sometimes, if you know there's gonna be contentiousness potentially in the process. Or if you haven't done it before, you're trying a new process, yeah. I'm happy to share more tools and resources, we also have a timeline, um, that just kinda spells out, if you decide to use our process, we can share a timeline um, template, so you can just fill it out, have that discussion as a board. Good questions. Alright, let's see, I'm sure I moved time, let's do, kinda already touched on that one. Oh, how about this, conflict of interest, the school district is now soliciting bids um, for the construction of the school, there are four qualified bids and the school board will be awarding the contract to one of the four bidders at their upcoming meeting. One of the qualified bids was submitted by the school board member's son. What would create a conflict of interest here? Does this create a conflict of interest?
This, this is irrelevant to us, because you have to pass a bond in order to do this.
And there. Alright. Well, if it wasn't, uh, if you didn't have to pass a bond, would this be a conflict of interest?
I'll pass a bond, Janet, don't worry, we're doing it.
Yes, it's a conflict of interest, and you would need to recuse yourself of um any kind of, yeah, any kind of participation of any sort from the get-go. I mean, I think even if they were in the, if they, they submitted a bid, you would have to, at the very beginning, say, hey, I can't. I can't participate in this because this is this is my son's business or whatever. And then I don't think you should partake in any of it.
Yeah, it's a fair question. Does the board actually decide who gets the contract? Or is it because I thought there was a
A process, a sealed bid process, then we'd make a recommendation and you guys would vote on it. So.
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess you could recuse yourself, but you've already been presented with the the technical bid winner.
Yeah. And you're just formally done. But that's where you could
On the safety side of things, I'd recuse myself.
And Kelsey's done an awesome, Kelsey's husband is a is a counselor in our district and she's done an awesome job. Any contracting out of an abundance of caution, just got a script and yeah, something.
Out of abundance of a caution because we do that a lot.
Well, and and that's why that culture thing we talked about at the beginning is so important, because if you trust your other board members, it's no big deal to step aside. If there's no trust within the board, then it becomes much more
Right.
Yep, good point. Yeah. And then here too, um, when it comes to conflict of interest. Uh, you know, would this have a financial impact, either positive or negative, on the son's construction company? That's kind of how you would have to weigh it. But yes, you know, recusing yourself. I was told, um, that Oregon government ethics laws are expanding effective in January twenty twenty six, who is considered a member of the household. So keep an eye out for that as that I'm sure we're going to put out something about it to individuals who are just not living with the public official. Um, not just a rep. So um, it's changing who is considered a member of the household is what I was informed. So, but that's not in effect until January twenty twenty six, but just a heads up when it comes to conflict of interest, which is why you want to take these trainings and why, you know, we're constantly updating you all. And it's again, a steep learning curve because laws change, statutes, policies, right? We have policy updates. So um, that's why I wanted to share that as well. Okay, so those are the scenarios. Any new insights on why the board matters? I kept hearing board culture sprinkled in throughout these scenarios, which is great. Um, or why the superintendent relationship matters? Anything new to add in terms of what we discussed at the beginning? No. Okay.
Oh, because we all know that if you have bad a bad board or bad board culture or a bad superintendent board relationship, then bad things happen.
And then you grow. So what tools, what tools can you use to avoid that, Scott and board members? Right? I mentioned a few, which is such a good segue. I love when that happens. Such a good segue into this next little piece I want to share. Um, I mentioned a few of these, but this is just snapshots of those, you know, board operating agreements. Um, can be a great way to, um, create some clear expectations. We have samples on our website. Um, but also the board superintendent operating agree, making sure, um, if you don't have one, that the board sets some clear expectations for the superintendent and the superintendent sets some clear expectations for the board. Do y'all have both or one of those documents? Do you have a board operating agreement or a board superintendent operating agreement?
We have neither. Um, we've explored. We've explored both. And even I I guess I would say and there's a lot of factors in this and variables. When we did have one, it had never been worse.
Hmm.
Uh, it might be something to look into. I think I remember a Scott and Cooper quote was, these things are only for people who don't know what they're doing.
That rings true.
I like to say, set up the system before you need it. But I mean, of course, it's up to the board, you're right. If it if it's something that would be helpful. You don't want to make it overwhelming. You definitely want to, um, if there is something that needs just further discussion or further clarification, it can be a useful tool.
What would get you teeth to a tool like that?
Because the why, like what was
My my thinking is if you've got that disruptive of a member or relationship or whatever, they care about these agreements. And so if they're flaunting those, why, why would it matter if you had it or not? Because ultimately, isn't a board position removed by the public? Or a resignation?
Yeah.
So an agreement, you wouldn't have teeth, correct?
You could. Potentially.
Uh, that would be a very, I I think what I've just seen is and again, to your point, Janet, like you want to have a system in place before there, before you need a system in place. But I I think you know, a piece of paper. You know, compared, yeah, compared to trust, relationship and communication. You know, those qualities outweigh whether we have something written down. So you know, something we could look at in the future, I think definitely. But but I think as you've heard, um, we are at a good place. And maybe we could look at some examples, but but I think the trust and relationship are are there. Um, I think our board election is in two years, so, uh, maybe we we look before then, but but at this point, I think we're all in a healthy place.
I was going to suggest, um, you know, doing it like as part of, and we've actually implemented as part of a board membership onboarding process. If you have these documents, like reviewing that with those new board members, so then they know what the expectations are and not using it when you need. Also, another way to proactively use it. Yep. And again, whatever best is, you know, meets the board's needs.
A lot of those typical things are not in the granger level, but are outlined in policy. They're just kind of spread out and a little more general in policy versus those are much more like specific. Um, and all our board members, when they do start as part of the onboarding process, go through those key policies in the, what is it, the B category, um, to kind of hammer out a lot of those details.
Yeah, I will say, I I too agree. Um, oftentimes it is what's already in policy. It just helps boards have like key things that they need to make sure are highlighted. Um, and that tool serves as an accountability tool essentially. And to, and I hear what you're saying, though, like, well, what is that piece of paper going to do? Like, you can talk to that individual, but if they want to continue the behavior, they're going to continue the the behavior, right? We hope that by having a one on one conversation, you you can try to mitigate it, but yeah. What? Sorry?
He's going to make a smarm.
Yeah. I was gonna, I think I've seen them brought to Scott a couple of times and they didn't, they didn't last very well. So, uh, we're in a very good place.
I'd agree. I'm all about the trust. I haven't known some of these folks very long, but I trust them. And they're easy to work with, and we seem to be all on the same page. And I've known Joel for many years. Um, I think we have bigger fish to fry than that at this point. I'd be willing to do good stuff, but, uh, yeah, we certainly have bigger fish to fry.
Let's talk about food conference then.
Yeah. The the reason I like these agreements is because the good people abide by them, the bad people don't. That's exactly what I'm saying. Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was hearing. Yeah. Well, there's other tools, uh, you know, again, whatever works for the board. Um, I mentioned the board's self evaluation. If you haven't done one of those, um, those are to just kind of, um, see where the board's at in terms of, um, areas of growth and areas of, um, areas of success. Communication protocols are a little bit different than operating agreement. If you haven't heard of those, that's sometimes too like on how, if they're inquiry from the community, just for example, who manages it, who's going to respond? Um, who gets, you know, copied on it, et cetera. So sometimes that's what communication protocols can help with or requests for information. Um, I guess a lot of that sometimes can be in policy, but it can just, uh, it's good to just have that conversation. So everybody understands what that policy is saying. And then superintendent evaluation, which I mentioned. So these are all tools for collaboration um, that we have in our parliamentary procedure. Um, I mentioned this, and I'm just going to stress it again, how important that board superintendent relationship is and to evaluate and how important that evaluation is. It's one of the board's most powerful relationship building tools. In terms of building trust, this is how you're going to do it by setting up that process, not having, avoiding surprises, right? This should be a very positive experience for your superintendent. It should be a year long process, clear expectation set, regular structured conversations, check ins throughout. Um, we recommend at least a midyear check in just to see, hey, how is progress going? Any questions? A great opportunity for the superintendent to say, hey, I know you, I was going to address this, but you know, I'm going to be honest, I'm I'm going to be not be able to meet maybe all the way this goal and just being really transparent in terms of where you're at with progress of your, um, evaluation and then celebrating success of your superintendent. So I mentioned starting that process early. Uh, yes?
Oh, I just have a question with the format that you have that we constantly would be looking at because I think any good evaluation is a bilateral conversation. And so does that give Joel the chance to, I mean, not just like provide artifacts, because like that feels like almost like a defense and and maybe there's a time to face for that, but also like, is there like, are we doing our job to like make his job successful? You know, like, and having to be like more of that conversation versus just a an evaluation because
Absolutely. I think where boards can can make that connection point is with your board goals. Because board goals, just like superintendent goals, they should be supporting each other. So like, there is that, um, correlation, you know, the 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 board goals align with the district goals. But also, how are you, how are you supporting the superintendent and achieving their goals? And how are those goals that the superintendent set, um, supporting and achieving the district goals? So there is a lot of alignment. I actually have a little chart and I'm happy to send it where it explains like this is what board goals are. This is where superintendent goals are, and this is district goals, and this is how it all kind of aligns together.
No, like, that's not quite what I'm talking about. Like, because I mean, that's just around like having like good execution. What I'm talking about more is, you know, we're talking about this formal evaluation process. It's like is is Joel needing getting what he needs from us to have those goals to have a life or you like, it's like, it's
Oh, I see. Yeah, you can ask that during evaluations. I think that's fair to ask, you know, how are we supporting you around this standard? Especially the standard around policy governance. And if you use our standards, our eight, there is ways to to incorporate that feedback.
Maybe we can just take that as something we need to pop up because I'm assuming we all thought you that and
Yeah, it's basically like your employer asking you, what training would you like to?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's fair. And I like that you're saying that because you're saying like, hey, you know, if there's an area that you need to grow in, how can we support you? Or are we doing enough? Are we letting you manage? Like, yeah, I think that's that's good questions to ask. I mean, Joel, how do you feel about that?
Yeah, definitely. I mean, one thing I really like about this board is their desire to, um, to hear from students, to hear from staff, to hear from community, and then also to hear from, sounds like, uh, the the superintendent. And and I think again, it goes back to us building that communication, trust and relationship. And and, uh, yeah, I feel like we all can be very candid and honest with each other. And I think that's one of our strengths.
Oh, and we do.
I bet.
Yeah, I think that's great. I love that you said that. Okay, well, this is just again, kind of, if you adopt ours, this is the five part process. Um, you adopt the tool, you set goals. Um, there's quarterly evaluation check ins. This is optional target feedback survey. I don't recommend it for first year superintendents, but later down the road, I think this is a great, um, you know, to get additional, um, information from, uh, staff, and it's very targeted because together with the superintendent, you determine what staff are going to take this survey to help us gather more information and data um, around, uh, the performance of the superintendent. So staff and then also community members, but it's targeted and you do it together and you agree if you're going to add this as part of the process. Again, don't recommend it for first year superintendents. And then you have your formal summit of evaluation where you have that discussion. Uh, the superintendent would present the artifacts of evidence. Um, and the the board would ask questions and then have a discussion and have a rubric. All right. So I know I covered a lot. I just have a couple of minutes here because I want to respect the two hours that you gave me, six to eight. Um, I do just want to touch a couple of things of where you can find things on our website. I know it's not always super intuitive. Um, a key thing I want to highlight is this little icon person. How many of you have access to your web, your OSBA membership portal? Just to raise a hands. Have you all accessed access that? Okay. And if you haven't and if you can't, let me know and I will, um, route you to, um, the department membership coordinator to help, um, make sure that you can access it. That is where behind the portal. Um, there's a lot of additional resources. A lot of our things are free on our website, but sometimes there are some things behind the portal. So um, you know, that's where the public meetings law webinar is, um, and a couple of other things. So poke around and make sure you can access that. If you have any questions, departments or trainings, um, I mentioned the info at OSBA. If you're not sure where to start, um, that is always a great spot, and then it can route you to the department that you need. A lot of different, um, access and services that are exclusive to our members. I'm not the only department. Um, so this is just a snapshot of what that portal looks like. When you click that icon, it will take you here and then you'll be able to access a lot of resources. There's kind of what you can access, just a couple, a glimpse of what, once you're in the portal, boardmanship guide, a board chair guide. Um, there's just a bunch of different things and then you can go to my resources and find more. You probably get inundated with a lot of our, um, emails from OSBA, um, our marketing team does a good job of putting out just so you're, you know, um, informed of what's happening at the state or in your region as well. Um, it is a great way to just see and have those connection points and see what's happening with other, um, districts of your size, et cetera. We have a lot of conferences. Annual convention is right around the corner, so we're gearing up for that here in Portland. Um, we're no longer doing the summer board conference. We're moving to summer school sessions. We're having one in Redmond next year. So be on the lookout for more information about that. We're trying out, we heard from our members. Hey, it would be great to have just professional development training in different regions. So we're coming to Redmond next year and we're going to, um, Eugene Lane Community College. So, um, really excited and it will be a one day event instead of our summer board conference. So that will not be happening next year. So, um, stay tuned for more details on that. We do have a little bit of information on our website already. Um, this is just the policy. We host your policies. I gave you a sample packet, especially of some of the scenarios we ran through. Um, public comment is also in there. Um, that's another policy that I would say familiarize yourself with if you haven't already. Um, so I provide you a little sample of some policies. Um, but really you should be looking at um, section A B at a minimum, really look at that section as it pertains to board governance. And again, we host all your policies. Um, there. Ball regionals, I believe yours is in a few days. So, um, strong encourage you to attend. It's at High Desert E S D. Um, our government relations and communications team will be talking about what's happening at the state, a lot of, uh, great information. Um, it's going to be at the High Desert E S D. So that's this Wednesday, October twenty ninth. This is the team, my whole team, Director of Board Development, Kristen Miles. Reggie, probably maybe Tammy, I'm sure you've gotten lots of emails from Reggie to coordinate the training. Um, also a newer thing that we've had now, if you haven't heard, we have board development training contractors. We really want to make sure we're regionalizing and supporting all of our districts across the state. So really exciting. We have two regionally based trainers that offer OSBA approved trainings, one in Eastern Oregon, Intermountain E S D, Mark Mulvihill, and we have one in Southern Oregon, uh, Phoenix Town School Board Chair, Michael Campbell. And as always, contact us. We are here for you. Um, utilize this as a resource. Ask questions. If I don't have the answer, I'm happy to route you to another department. Um, if anything else here in this training, you're like, I want to know more, but I can't remember. Feel free to call. I'm happy to answer and I will provide these slides as well. Um, so again, just remember that you impact the system and it starts with you as individual board members impacting that organizational culture and climate and impacting your students. When board work looks like this, which I know it doesn't, but in the future, hopefully not, but if when board work looks like this, come back to this, come back to your students. Um, what you're all here for, you're on the same team. If your relationship ever looks like this, come back to this, that balanced governance, that trust, right? Having that communication, being in that informed oversight. All right, so that is all I have. What will you do next? What's next for you as a board? I heard in December, you're going to discuss evaluation.
Dinner, I believe.
Dinner? Yeah, me too. Um, and I know some of you are coming to convention. Hopefully, I'm usually running around as the program planner, but I hope I see some of you and please stop me if you see me. I would love to say hi in person. Um, and safe travels. And, um, that's all I have for you. Do you have any questions or comments for me? Um, and safe travels and um, that's all I have for you. Do you have any questions or comments for me as your trainer today?
Thank you very much.
Of course, and here, um, if you can just snap a picture with your phone, we welcome feedback. Um, that's how we improve our trainings, so please, um, please give us your feedback if you have a couple minutes. Um, we take that into consideration, so we continue to improve. As I mentioned, based on feedback, we are now doing regional trainings. And we're super excited to do that next year in replacement of our summer conference.
You like that? So, I went to it, right?
I did, I I. I didn't get to go this last year, but anyhow, I've been to it and I really enjoyed the summer conference, but. It will be so much easier if it's in Redmond instead of. So, yeah.
Yeah, maybe not this fall cuz it's in a couple weeks, but I would highly encourage you to come to an OSBA annual training. Um, I mean, you've probably done fifteen of them, but you always just get little nuggets of what some districts are doing well or what needs to improve.
It really is good.
Yeah, it's it's enjoyable.
I'm good. I'm glad to hear that. Well, y'all, that's all I have for you. Thank you so much for having me tonight and yes, please get some dinner. Um, thank you so much.
Thank you, Jay. I appreciate it.
Great rest of your night.
You too.
Thanks.
Alright, team. Eight oh four and we're gonna adjourn this meeting.